All right, let's come to order, please. Good evening and welcome to the August Meeting of the Board of Trustees of the South Orange County Community College District. As always, we will begin with a report of actions taken in closed session, of which I understand there were none. Is that true, Madam Clark?
Yes, there are no -- nothing to report out.
Very good, thank you very much. We will invite you all now to s-
Oh, excuse me, I think there's one more.
Yes, sir. Uh, there was one, there, okay, the council informs us that that is not to be reported out.
Yeah, I ask counsel that. Thank you.
And, and if it is, we will remedy that next month.
Thank you.
All right. Um, at this point, we invite you to stand for an invocation to be led by Trustee Williams, to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, to be led by Trustee Lang.
O heavenly Father, we ask for your inspiration and guidance as we conduct the business of our college district this evening. Thank you for our many teachers and support staff that serve the needs of our students. We ask that you bless our many troops serving around the world to keep us safe and allow us to enjoy our freedom. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Please join me as we salute the flag of this great nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have one presentation, and this is the 211 OC presentation. I understand we have some folks here for that, and I suppose what I ought to do at this point is turn this over to Trustee Milchiker, who has invited them here and can introduce the item for us.
Okay, I'd like to introduce the item. There's a very important organization which will help, um, help our college and help our students and our constituents, and it's, uh, I'd like the people that are putting it on to explain it, so, um, so, um, can they please come forward and I'll introduce them? Or are you planning to introduce them? Sorry.
I can introduce them, unless you want to. It's okay with me.
Go ahead. Go ahead, why don't you start?
Okay, thank you very much, President Wagner and members of Board Trustees. I thank you for giving us this opportunity to share with you about this great organization in your community. And with me today in the audience, I have the President of 211's Chairman of the Board, Jeff Lutz. And I have Mabub Akhtar with us, he's our Vice President of our Board. And I have John McGuinness, who is a member of our Community Relations Committee. And thank you for being here tonight to help support me. 211 actually came about, about 10 years ago because somebody said, "Why should it be so difficult for people to find help in our community?" And therefore, the federal government was lobbied for a three-digit designation, and today we have 211 as a three-digit number to call when you need Health and Human Services. Our mission then is to help people find the help they need. What we want to do today is share with you the role 211 plays in the community, and how we touch the same population you serve. We want to share what we can do for you and share what we believe you can do for us. 211 actually is a community service, and we've had a lot of people come together to support the reason to have this service in Orange County. As here's Assemblyman Todd Spitzer has a testimony about how we're a valuable asset, as well as the President of the United Way. He's still around somewhere, I'm sure. And Maria Chavez-Wilcox, the President of the United Way in Orange County, also sees the value of this service, and they actually help fund our programs. We receive a call every 51 seconds coming into our system of people looking for help, and we're here to connect those individuals in need before a crisis becomes an emergency. We also are a centralized social service database of all the services in Orange County, and we're a resource for educators, for city staff, hospitals, police and fire, and many other public service professionals. We are funded by some primary people in our community, the Orange County United Way, the County of Orange, their Community Services Division, the Children and Families Commission, and we also have a partnership with Help Me Grow, which is funded through UCI and CHOC. Since we were, took on the license of 211 in 2005, you can see the growth of this agency, where we were receiving less than 20,000 calls from people looking for help, to close to 100,000 this year and expected more. We've actually been around for 20 years, and we're known as InfoLink prior to 211, but since we took on the, the three-digit number and the awareness grew, our calls have just grown exponentially, in addition to the recession, which has not eliminated much of the calls at all. We're funded, uh, here's the different revenue sources. Forty-six percent of our revenue does come through government contracts, uh, 15% or 16% is coming through what we call Fee for Service, where we actually provide additional services such as pre-screening calls for food stamps and for the rapid rehousing. Twenty-nine percent of our funding comes through grants, and we're just starting to build on our social enterprise or an earned, earned income model for our agency to produce additional unrestricted dollars. Sixty-four percent of our budget is made up of our wages and benefits for our employees who are helping folks in our community, and 4% goes to our rent. General operating expenses are 11%, 16% are for outside support, and that's our, we contract out for IT support, grant writing, and things like that. And then 5% is for our telephone costs, and that's actually a small percentage when you think about it. Our whole system is around the telephony that we have in place. Who calls 211? Um, we have, we serve from cradle-to-grave services, so anybody can call this service, even if they're just looking for a place to volunteer or to donate a good, to helping people in need over basic needs. We support 150 languages using a language line interpretation, but in-house, we have Spanish, Vietnamese, and English speakers in there. Eighty-seven percent of our calls do come from English-speaking and 12% from Spanish speakers. Our largest population that we serve is the adult population, but within that, 22% of the calls are around issues for children from zero to five, and we do have 9% are youth that are served in there. And our ethnicity of our callers, 38% identify themselves as non-Hispanic white, 32% as Hispanic Latino, and then we have 6.4% is the African-American community. So one of our major challenges that we're dealing with is staffing. With the increased demand on our services and the reduced availability of funding in our community due to the recession, uh, it's a, it's a problem for us to be able to find the resources to hire more people and also to recruit volunteers. Consequently, our abandonment rate, which was, used to be less than 8%, has gone as high as 40% on some days, and we're averaging around 20%. An abandonment rate is a number of people who aren't able to get through and they hang up, and then they'll try calling back later. Uh, it's not a rate that we're proud of, and it makes it difficult for us to do follow-up on the referrals, to find out if people are getting the resources that they need, because we, we're lucky just to even answer the phones right now. We have a challenge in our funding diversity. Uh, as you saw, we get a lot of funding from foundations and from, um, the government. So where we really need to diversify is getting into the corporate pool of funds and individual donations, as well as build on our social enterprise product line. And another challenge is board recruitment. We are always looking for board members from all areas of our community, and we have six slots open now, so we're willing to talk to anybody who is interested in being on our board, particularly in your community of education. So it's an ongoing needs in Orange County. Since the recession in 2008 started, we've had over 97,000 calls for people looking for basic need support, food, shelter, clothing, utility assistance. Over 15,000 of those calls have been for food referrals. We've also found that we're having increases in cities where we once was considered less likely to need, need a service like ours, Mission Viejo. Eighteen percent of the calls have increased coming out of this community. Elisa Viejo has had a 23% increase. Dana Pointe has had a 30% increase of calls coming into us. Here's an example how, um, requests for housing have increased over, compared from 2008 to 2010. As you can see, continually growing. Same with, um, requests for rental assistance. That is even a higher demand, is folks aren't able to make their rent payments. Lost jobs, lost, you know, benefits. Uh, food requests have gone up, as well as people looking for employment and training opportunities. They're tuning to us to find out where they can go for those services, to learn a new skill set. And healthcare requests have gone up significantly. Again, this is from people losing their jobs, consequently, they've lost their healthcare benefits, and they're looking to us to find out where, where the community clinics, where can I go? I have an earache, I have no healthcare, uh, what do I do? And we can, uh, point them in the right direction. So what are the types of requests that we get for help? Programs for children, youth, and families. We have childcare, after-school programs, Head Start programs, family resource centers, mentoring and tutoring. People during a crisis of emergency turn to us, what they're looking for, where the evacuation sites might be, road closures, where do I take my lost, you know, where's my lost pets, runaway? Where might I find them? So that we're here during a disaster, emergency, and we're here afterwards for the recovery period. Basic need services that we, that 64% I think are calls right now around this is for shelter, rental assistance, and utility assistance. We also have physical and mental health resources for crisis intervention, support groups, dental resources, drug and alcohol treatment. In addition, I told you about the unemployment services that we have, and support for seniors and those with disabilities. So people can turn to us if they're looking for adult daycare, meal services for their family, respite care and transportation for, uh, to get to medical appointments. Under the housing and shelter support, we have referrals for the homeless shelters, emergency shelters, or transitional, domestic violence, affordable housing. We classify everything into categories that makes it easier for our call handlers to search the database. Under financial assistance, there's rental assistance, utility assistance, motel vouchers, clothing, gas, federal, state assistance programs. For our food assistance, we have the emergency food, the food pantries, soup kitchens, meals on wheels, food stamps, and commodity supplemental food programs for folks. Under medical services, there's the free and low-cost medical clinics, dental clinics, eye clinics, immunizations, flu shots, physical exams, and insurance application assistance. And then under counseling, we have counselors for teens, individual family, divorced, parenting, domestic violence, mental health, drug and alcohol, foreclosures, and credit. So we have a vast number of resources, as you can see in our database, over 4,800 programs here in Orange County. We are here 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We're free and we're confidential. We offer a multilingual service. It's an easy number to remember, 211, like 411 or 911. And it's one simple call that gives access to community resources. So what we feel that we can do with you is we have student volunteer opportunities. In fact, we had two students call us, um, this week from Saddleback College looking for the ability to intern. Uh, we thought of a way that maybe we can create a telephone tree in the event of emergencies so we can get the message out to everyone out to call us. Uh, intern opportunities obviously there. And we also have, I mentioned our social enterprise product. That's the Quick Link subscription that we're finding that many universities are interested in, and the high schools about accessing our database, subscribing to that access where your counselors and student nurses can, or is, and also in the psychology department, can actually look up resources for the students coming in and looking for help. So our future is, uh, we look beyond the needs of today and anticipate the needs of our future, and we look forward to working with you. Are there any questions?
Trustee Milchiker.
Yeah, thank you so much. I, I was, was hesitant to speak earlier because I did meet with John McGuinness and Mabub Akhtar, who are in the audience, and, uh, I didn't know the names of the other officials in the organization, so I, I was hesitant to introduce you. But this seems like a, a really valuable asset to our community. People call 211 and getting access to all of the, the services in our community. You did answer how we could be involved, you know, we, we have a wonderful human services department that needs to, their students need to intern. We have a number of other programs where students need to intern, and plus, our students might need these services. Plus, we offer our wonderful educational opportunities for people that need training, training and retraining, who need to get jobs. So it seems to me, we can work together. I, I was thinking that perhaps we should assign one dean, perhaps a dean of student services at each college, to, to work with you and see how we could work together in a, in a better way. Is, is that feasible? Let me ask the college presidents, is, is that feasible to do?
I've already been taking notes.
Okay, thank you.
Exactly what I was thinking, but, uh, yes, I, I have questions I can deal with later at some time, but, uh, I certainly think there's some tremendous partnership opportunities that we have with our community colleges.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, being a, a fresh idea, I, I think there's, uh, a lot to talk about, and we'll certainly pursue that.
Okay, thank you.
And by the way, I'm Judy Bowden. I think in your thing is my business card, but I don't think I had enough for everybody, but just call 211 and ask for Judy.
Yeah. Plus, you have a great website, which I just looked up also, so thank you.
Trustee Lang.
Judy, I also just wanted to thank you for your presentation today. I had a chance to meet separately with John and Mabub as well, and, uh, had a good meeting. I think you're obviously performing a very valuable, uh, service, uh, you know, throughout the county. Uh, one of the things that I particularly like about, uh, the program is that it allows, um, many of the, um, organizations within the community that are providing the whole fabric of social services to hopefully better coordinate their efforts, maybe eliminate some redundancies, since this is obviously a difficult time, not only for those people that are being served by all the various agencies that you would refer to, uh, but, but certainly a much greater demand on those services as well. And so, the extent that we can achieve some economies of scale here, uh, I, I think that's a, that's a wonderful thing, so.
Yes, absolutely.
I, I hope, in fact, that we will find some ways to be able to work with your organization. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee, hang on, Trustee Williams.
Yes, thank you for your presentation. Um, I may have missed the part. Say the system is implemented, people have magnets on their refrigerators, stickers on their telephones to utilize your service. Is there something in place in the training for the people that are going to be, uh, manning the phones in case someone meant to dial 911? Or is there gonna be?
Oh, we actually, we actually are here to help relieve some of the calls on 911 for those non-emergency calls that they get, and vice versa. We do refer back to them if they need to. We can warm line into any emergency center so that if somebody is in a crisis mode, suicidal, we can make those connections without losing them.
Thank you.
Trustee Milchiker.
That's excellent, and we, we also might be able to help you with, um, evacuation sites, if there was some kind of a, a disaster. We, we have been used before, and, uh, perhaps we can work together in, in that as well.
That would be great.
And I, I think in these times, it's really good for people to have a number to call where they can get any of these services, and, uh, where they, as a clearinghouse for all these different many organizations out there, which, which, which will help them. And, uh, so I, I look forward to a good partnership, um, in the future between 211, Orange County, and, uh, the South Orange County Community College District. Thank you so much for your presentation. Thank you, Mabub and, and John, and all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy, appreciate it. And, uh, Trustee Milchiker, thank you for getting that set up. All right, we are at public comments, and at this point, I have only one request to speak. Is that it? And it is Professor Lisa Davis Allen, on behalf of the IVC Academic Senate.
Good evening. Although the ASCCC membership is agendized for Item 6.3, the IVC Academic Senate wants to ensure the following statement is placed in public record. The mission of the Academic Senate for California Community Colleges is to foster effective participation in all statewide and local academic and professional matters. The ASCCC provides local senate leadership, the necessary resources to facilitate their work, and assists local faculty in the development of policies that will better serve our California students. Working through local academic senates, the ASCCC provides institutional support and guidance in areas such as articulation and career pathways, basic skills initiatives, curriculum advancement, competency standards, SLO development, and accreditation. In addition, the ASCCC hosts professional events in educational leadership and teaching excellence to ensure the continued success of our California Community College system. The ASCCC's long and respected reputation in academic governance and professional matters has made it the primary organization of professional membership for academic senates across the state, currently boasting a 100% membership of all 112 California Community, Community College Academic Senates, including El Camino College Compton Center. On behalf of these members, the ASCCC collaborates with other statewide organizations to establish effective relationships and secure beneficial outcomes. It is the opinion of the Irvine Valley College Academic Senate that continued membership in the ASCCC is not only essential, but also crucial as we complete our accreditation self-study, prepare for the October 2010 Accreditation Team site visit, and develop our institution's 2011 Educational and Facilities Master Plan. To perhaps deny our longstanding professional ASCCC membership without articulated rationale or thoughtful discourse would be imprudent and may prove harmful in this articu, in this accreditation year. The IVC Academic Senate requests that the SOCCCD Board of Trustees approves the funds necessary for continued IVC Academic Senate membership in the Academic Senate for California Community Colleges. Thank you.
Can I ask a clarification?
You may, sir.
Thank you. The statement you read said, "May prove harmful in this accreditation year." The documentation that was provided to us is in this articulation year?
Yes.
Which word is correct?
Articulation year.
So not accreditation.
I mean, I'm sorry, accreditation year.
Okay.
In this accreditation year. Thank you.
Any, anything else in this report that we've got that's in error?
Other than you should be a professor as well, you're better at proofing this than I was.
I'm not proofing it, I'm listening to what you say and comparing it to what you write, and seeing a disconnect between what you said and what you wrote.
I do think.
And a disconnect between what the ASCCC does at the state level and what we're told it does here, but maybe we can develop that in a little more detail when we get to 6.3. I just wanted clarification on that.
All right.
Word usage. Thank you.
Accreditation.
A couple of housekeeping details. Uh, we will advance the budget items and get those out of the way, so if the, the students can get prepared for those, uh, they'll be up, uh, pretty quickly. And then also, um, you know, on June 15th, a longtime Emeritus faculty member, Professor Leslie Cromwell, passed away, and at the request of Trustee Milchiker, I'd like to ask the Board that we adjourn tonight's meeting in memory, in memory of Professor Cromwell. So with those housekeeping, uh, details, we're gonna get to, uh, board reports and then move into the budgets. So let's start with Trustee Jay.
Uh, just briefly, um, we opened all three campuses relatively smoothly. Very pleased to see that. I'll be interested in the exact enrollment figures that the two Presidents and Provost have as we get along in the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Williams.
Yes, uh, just last week, I, uh, had a tour of the ATAP campus, and I wanted to thank, uh, Provost Peebles for the, the tour. I peeked in a couple of classrooms, and we took a drive around the area. I went, hadn't been there in a few years, I wanted to see the area that we were talking about demolishing, and it is quite a large area. To see 68 acres on a map, as opposed to driving around and looking at it, that's a very large campus to develop. And I just spoke to President Rockmore tonight, I've been invited to do a tour at Irvine Valley. I hope to do that before the next meeting, and then President Burnett, maybe the next month, I'll, I'll come by for another tour. It's been a couple of years since I've toured each of the campuses, so we'll knock them all off in three months. Thank you very much.
Trustee Milchiker.
Yes, I, I thank you for adjourning the, um, meeting in memory of Professor Cromwell. He was a very distinguished individual, and, um, not only was he an individual, distinguished individual and a full professor of electrical engineering, but he was the, the president of our foundation for a number of years, and very, um, very, very, um, key in, in forwarding our Emeritus Institute. He's a strong believer of lifelong learning, and I tend, I attended the celebration of his life, and, uh, he was a witty, witty man, and, uh, very distinguished, and, um, he and his wife Irma, uh, went, um, hundreds and hundreds of cruises all the time, and, and had a wonderful life, and, um, the, the, the celebration of his life was, was just as wonderful as he was. I had seen him a week before he passed away at, at, at one of the Saddleback College performances, so, um, he, he lived well till the very end. Um, I also wanted to say I had my batteries recharged by attending, uh, just about all of the events at Flex Week for the district and for Saddleback College. Unfortunately, I missed the ones at IVC this year, and it's not that, uh, I, I love IVC and love Saddleback College equally, but it just worked out in my schedule that I could get to the Saddleback College ones. Uh, I, I was actually in, along with Trustee, um, Lang, was, was in a performance the very first day for the Chancellor's Opening Session, written by David Bouguet, that, that slogan was, um, "This way to the top." And, um, it was, it was very funny and very good, and I, that was my debut as, as an actor in, in, in our community. And, uh, for, for the, the rest of Flex Week, everyone was saying, "This way to the top," because the theme was, "Community colleges will help everyone get to the top," and it's, it's an excellent theme. And, uh, Chancellor Bullock's, um, theme was civility and, what was it? Civility to everyone, so, um, we're continuing along with civility to everyone, and it's, it's an excellent theme. Uh, just, uh, highlights of some of the, uh, sessions I attended in, uh, the Flex Week were the Chancellor's Opening Session, the Faculty Breakfast, um, the President's Welcome Back for the Faculty at Saddleback College, where, um, the Academic Senate President, Carmen Dominguez, spoke. The Classified Senate Luncheon, where both Russ Hamilton, uh, the President of the Classified Senate, and Shawna Morehouse, Morehouse, I'm sorry, the President of the CSEA spoke. Uh, I attended the Geek, Geek Session, uh, put on by Bob Brumucci and, and Jim Gaston, that was just extraordinary. And from Bob Brumucci and Jim Gaston and Russ Hamilton, I learned about some of the wonderful websites we have available for our faculty and for our staff and our students, and some of the things that we're doing for future students, including have apps to have the students go onto their iPod or iPhone and, uh, find locations on the campus. It was all very exciting and very geeky, and I, I just loved that. And Shawna gave us some really good, um, information about the state, statewide CSEA. And I also attended a, a benefits, uh, kind of, uh, show, which was, which was fun also. I also attended Damn Yankees, a performance of, at Saddleback College, and it was really incredible because, um, going on with the show, there were bees in the theater, so they had to move it at very last minute from the McKinney Theater to the gym. And they did a fabulous job, they made a lemonade into a lemon, and putting on the performance of Damn Yankees, which is, which is, uh, showing how, uh, this, the, the, this team defeated the Yankees after five years of trying. It was really appropriate to have it in the gym, so that was really fun. So, uh, all of, everyone's doing a fabulous job, and we have fabulous staff, and if you go to these events and these meetings, you can see what a fabulous job all of, all of our staff and, and, um, classified and, uh, faculty do. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, I want to start with my thanks to Chancellor Bullock and to, um, Vice Chancellor Bouguet, who put together a wonderful Chancellor's Opening Session. Uh, it's pretty clear there's a bug or two still to work out. But I bumbled along just fine.
You did a great job.
And, and it was a, it was a, a great job, and, and really very much appreciated, and, uh, through the modern, uh, the miracle of modern technology, Dixie was able to join us from Russia, and, uh, we are glad to have her now back in person, so welcome back. And, uh, again, great, uh, great job, and good luck to everybody, uh, for the coming semester. Uh, Trustee Fuentes.
Thank you. Since last we gathered, I had the occasion to visit the Reagan Ranch in Santa Barbara, and to share, uh, a day with fellow Californians as we celebrated the anniversary of President Reagan's signing of the greatest tax cut in American history. Reagan's signing of the greatest tax cut in American history. I recalled and was made all the more proud of the fact that we recognized by my initiative and suggestion this room in honor of President Reagan, and it was a very special day. Thank you.
And Trustee Lang.
Yes, I wanted to also mention how much I enjoyed participating in the acting chancellor's opening session. Kudos to our acting chancellor, Bullock, on her high-tech participation and appearance in that session. Trustee Wagner on an almost stinging performance. David Bouguet, who emceed much of that session, and obviously very impressed with Bob Bermucci. I had no idea what a frustrated rock star he was, and of course, everybody else who managed to contribute to a very successful opening. I also had a chance, and I wanted to thank ATAP Provost Randy Peebles, as well as Rocky Sefoni and Terry Flugman and others, who invited me to visit the campus for a tour of the facilities, an update on our programs there, all very interesting and exciting. That's it.
Trustee Shay.
I had the privilege of going to the trustee workshop at the Radisson Hotel in Newport Beach. I met basically all the student trustees from all over California. These students were very bright and very intellectual, and about 98% of them wanted to be political science majors and go to UCLA. I got to listen to Scott Lay talk about our community colleges in the future, and I got to learn about different kinds of leadership, and I found out what our objective was, which was what can improve student success and what can we do on campuses to promote success. And that's it.
Thank you. And Chancellor Bullock.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to thank all of you who did attend the chancellor's opening session, and especially thank you to those who participated since I couldn't be there. It was a great experience, and if you haven't already watched the streaming video, I suggest that you do because somebody fixed it up a little bit, and so I'm making this wonderful speech, and every once in a while, there's hysterical laughter in the background, so I could tell sort of what was going on. But thank you very much, all of you. I consider it a great show of your support, and I did have a great time on my trip. One other thing I'd like to mention is that last Monday, we had the start of school. I was not up at IVC at that time, but I can tell you that enrollments were booming because the parking was awful. So anyway, but that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Some students standing eagerly at the podium, so without further ado, we will jump ahead -- oh, with a little further ado, real quick, any requests of my colleagues for board reports? All right. Now we'll go to item 6.1, which is here for approval, the Saddleback College and IVC final budgets. And let's start with Ms. Locke and IVC, I suppose.
Oh, thank you very much. We're happy to come forward to present our final budget for the ASIVC for the year 2010-11. I want to introduce you again to our president, which is Patrick McDonald, and he'll make the other introductions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Locke. Good evening, President Wagner, Acting Chancellor Bullock, members of the board, President Rockmore, President Burnett, and governance groups' leaders. Tonight, I would like to introduce Elijah Lee, which is our vice president of ASIVC, and George Talavera, our ASIVC treasurer. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to these two to present the budget.
All right, so I would like to begin. It is our pleasure to bring you the ASIVC final budget for 2010, 2011, and I'd like to begin with the highlights of the changes that occurred once we received our final budget information from the district office. So page two, as you're going to see up on the screen, is actually the highlight of the changes, and what you'll see is that the following areas of the budgets are what we've increased. So we've increased our ending fund balance. We've increased the amount we had to campus life, the amount we had for co-curricular programs, and we've also increased contingency, mid-year requests, and scholarship funds. So on to page three, and this is our sources. So our beginning fund balance was our major change from the tentative budget, and that's what we had in June, and we've received our final beginning fund balance in July after all of the expenses, income, and unused line accounts are known. So we have an increase of $65,326 from our beginning fund balance, which changes our total to $90,826. There is no change to minimum guaranteed revenue, because this is the money we are guaranteed to get from the bookstore and the cafeteria each year. So there's a small increase to miscellaneous income from our estimated $82,900, which was close. We were only about $17,687 short of our calculation, so the increase for the small amount from bookstores, a large increase that we actually got from the cafeteria and from the ASG sticker sales. So our total fund balance is adjusted to reflect the increased beginning fund balance and our miscellaneous income, and that figure is $531,413.
Thank you. Design our use of funds somewhat changed our campus life, increased by $10,000. Co-curricular programs increased by $20,787. ASIVC operations had no change. Contingency, mid-year requests, scholarship increased by $52,226, and student support had no change. The total use of funds is equal to $531,413, which equals total source of funds, as you can see on the screen. Page four. The contingency emergency reserves are 10% of the total source of funds, which is $53,141. The allocation for anticipated mid-year requests is a portion of beginning fund balance funds to be used for one-time allocation, which is $69,425. Our scholarship funds have not changed, but includes the original $60,000 dedicated to our students and $20,000 for the Oshar Indomond Scholarship Program. This year, we will complete our Oshar Indomond Scholarship commitment for matching funding. With very few changes to our tentative budget, we followed the final budget template that district accounting department uses and worked with Saddleback's ASG so that both colleges look the same. We may have different line items, but our expenditures are similar. That concludes our ASIVC final budget presentation, and we'll take your questions at this time.
Move to approve the submittal.
Second. Discussion?
Just like to say, good job for doing an excellent budget this year, and thank you for all your work in creating a budget that will work for our students. I know many of the things that you do is fund a lot of the activities on campus for our students, and this is an incredible service that you provide for our students, so thank you so much for doing that.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no further requests to speak, let's go ahead and vote on the budget. And the matter carries unanimously with one absence. Get your photos, and then we'll move on to Saddleback. Up next is the Saddleback budget.
I want to quickly introduce, thank you so much for having us here tonight. I'm Audra DePattiva, again, the Director of Student Development, and we have Melissa Finarchi here. She is our current ASG president, and we have Delaney Taylor, our past president. They'll present the budget to you this evening. Thank you.
Good evening, honorable trustees and Chancellor Bullock. My name is Melissa Finarchi, and I'm the Saddleback College's 2010-2011 ASG president.
And I'm Delaney Taylor, the 2009-2010 ASG president. Before we begin, we would like to thank you for giving us the opportunity to present to you our final 2010-2011 ASG budget.
We would also like to extend our deepest gratitude to everyone who supported us through this process. We will now begin the presentation of our final budget.
As you may recall, the process that the ASG Budget Committee used this year has changed slightly in comparison to the years prior. For the first time, we asked the college division representatives to rank and allocate money to each of the programs that had historically been funded, allocated funds by ASG during their spring or summer allocation process. This gave the ASG Budget Committee insight as to which events were important to each division and therefore guided the ASG grant process.
Once the ASG Summer Budget Committee received the beginning balance from the district, the committee worked to responsibly balance the budget and distribute the funds to our emergency reserve, scholarship fund, allocation for anticipated mid-year requests, and lastly, all division guarantees. The final budget was then approved by the Summer Budget Committee.
Before you, please observe our statement of financial position, the formatting of which was outlined by the district to closely correlate with what you see from the district and the colleges.
The first number with our sources of funds slide of the balance sheet is our beginning balance of $305,315, which contains our emergency reserve of $105,200. Again, we responsibly allocated these funds to the emergency reserve, scholarship fund, allocations for mid-year requests, and lastly, our division grants. The beginning balance minus the emergency reserve historically represents approximately 1/5 of the total ASG budget. We attribute this mostly to inefficiencies in our previous grant award process. By requesting a prioritized list of allocations from each division leader, we've now empowered all awardees to fully spend their allocations, thus ensuring that this valuable funding directly benefits students each year and isn't simply held over to the next. We look forward to reporting to you on our progress in the next year. The actual beginning balance represents the only significant change since we presented our tentative budget to you in June.
Just as a brief review, if you take a look at the slide in front of you, our sources of funds include the minimum guaranteed revenue and the ASB activity stamp sales. And our uses of funds include division grants, ASG operations, contingency, allocation for anticipated mid-year requests, and scholarships. Total uses of funds balances with the sources of funds at $1,506,315.
This next slide that you see before you is a breakdown of our contingency allocation for anticipated mid-year requests and scholarships as shown on the prior slide. I just wanted to say thank you for your support, support of student-oriented initiatives, events, and programs at Saddleback College. I recently wrote a research paper on student involvement in extracurricular activities, and it is displayed on the ASG website. Through my research, I have found the importance of these activities and how these activities lead to student success. Without the support of the funds entrusted into ASG, the students of Saddleback College would not have such significant opportunities to participate in the life of the college. It is with ASG funds that students have access to valuable and formative experiences with faculty, staff, and their peers outside of the classroom. It is participation specifically in this sort of co-curricular experiences that is a proven indicator of student success. Thank you.
Both Melissa and I are great examples of how the Saddleback College experience has significantly contributed to our growth, development, and success, both personally and professionally, as students and leaders. Now, we are pleased to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions from my colleagues. Trustee Lang.
I'll just make a motion to approve the Saddleback ASG budget.
Second.
Moved in second. Trustee Milchker.
Yeah, I wanted to also thank you for an excellent presentation, and I will look up your paper on the ASG website. I do know, because I've researched it in the past, that you are correct, that involvement in any student activity will highly increase the student's success rate at the community college. The student most at risk are the students that work full-time and take one or two classes, but because this is a commuter campus, students that are involved in an activity feel like they're part of the campus and feel attached to the campus. And I know ASG is a wonderful program for our students to be involved with because you could learn leadership skills, and that was a wonderful, well-practiced presentation with the two of you just speaking on cue, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, let's vote on the item. Matter carries unanimously with one absence. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you.
At this time, I inquire of my colleagues, which items, if any, do we wish to remove from the consent calendar?
Move the item.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Nothing coming off the consent calendar? All right. Let's vote on the consent calendar. Matter carries unanimously with one abstention. Let's see. We are at item 6.2, which is the adoption of the final budget, and out of consideration for Trustee Padberg, who is rushing back here, we're going to wait and see if we can give her an opportunity to get here to vote on this, so we'll put 6.2 off for a little bit and jump to item 6.3, which is the institutional memberships.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? It was polled by Trustee Fuentes originally. Have your questions been answered, sir?
They have been, thank you.
Thank you. I do have a question. How is -- or several, actually. How is the amount of the membership decided?
As I understand it, it is a predetermined calculation based on the growth of the institution. So for the last few years, and I'd be happy to send you that if you like, for the last few years, it's increased as our institution has increased as well, but it's a predetermined calculation that we don't have the ability to manipulate.
And how is it determined how much is spent on the seven different items that you've listed? Articulation, career pathways, basic skills initiative, curriculum advancement, competency standards, SLO development, and accreditation?
Well, when I was listing those, I can get you specific figures, funding figures, if you like. My point in the statement was to let you know that there's a great breadth of information and training in the leadership, as well as broad information for faculty members so that we might better and more accurately perform our job as a governance unit in a positive way, so that it's a very broad ability to help us in many different areas. Right now, the state has been very helpful as we begin to meet the 2012 deadline for SLO assessment and development.
And so it's probably a good thing that the colleges or the district pay for membership so that the senates can help us on this list of things, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, what about other things the senate does that perhaps are not helpful? Why should we be funding those?
What might the academic senate?
Oh, there could be a whole host of things. You've just got done telling me this is not necessarily an exhaustive list. This is just lists that they help you with. There might be other items that are not specifically tailored to these seven that the senates find themselves involved in, and I'm curious what percentage of our money goes to those things and what is the benefit we get from that? Carmen, looks like she may have an answer.
No, actually, I have the wrong set of glasses. I was just sort of.
Oh, okay.
Actually, I was thinking, how do I get back into AGB?
Thank you, sir. I get back to AGB to get my glasses, I can see. All right.
Try those.
Holy smokes. Okay.
Okay, well, I misunderstood. Okay. Well, I misunderstood. That looked like you wanted to address it. And I'll let either one of you address it if you'd like.
Address what?
The question I just asked.
What is that?
Let me try it again.
Okay.
Since you were fishing for glasses and not listening to the questions. There's a laundry list of items that the Senate is supposed to assist our local Senate's on. And I would probably agree with you, those are good things. But it seems to me, you wanted the question.
There you are.
It seems to me there are other activities the Senate's get involved in that are not either on this list, or the benefits to our local academic Senate are not apparent. And I'm wondering, how does one figure out how much money goes to things that we perhaps wouldn't like it spent on?
Like what?
I'm wondering if this institution has ever pursued a political agenda of some sort.
No.
I beg to differ.
Not me.
No, no, no. Not our local Senate. The state Senate.
Well, to a certain degree, well, no, not to a certain degree, to a large degree. The state Senate, the local Senate, don't influence many of the decisions that the state Senate does.
I understand that. My question is, since we don't influence and yet we're expected to pay, how is that a good deal for the taxpayers? If we can't influence and yet, at the state level, decisions are being made that are perhaps contrary to the best interests as perceived by this board of our local taxpayers, why should we continue to fund this institution, at least to the levels that they're requesting?
Ah, you know, I have a past Senate president sitting to my immediate left, and I believe he might be able to answer that with much more clarity and verbal acumen.
President Wagner, I would observe that as taxpayers, we fund the California State Legislature. And I'm not sure that every single person in this room always believes that the California State Legislature acts in the best interest of the taxpayers. So, that would, I think, be a charge that you could level at almost any taxpayer-funded institution. Nevertheless, as a statewide body, the academic Senate acts in a policymaking and lobbying mode to improve educational opportunities for the students of the California Community College system. Sometimes, not every individual taxpayer might agree that what they're doing is in the best interests of that particular person. But by and large, as a body, they are there to advocate for the students that we serve as a district and that you serve as trustees as well. And so, in general, I'd say that we are supporting an institution.
Well, let me, I'm sorry, I didn't want to cut you off. Go ahead. Let me respond in a couple of ways. First of all, the members of the legislature that you've pointed out are elected by a majority. And the way we allocate decisions in this country is by election. There is no member of the constituency this board serves that has elected the members of the academic Senate. And so, the analogy, I think, breaks down. More to the point, though, I would agree with you to the extent you talk about the state academic Senate making policymaking and lobbying decisions. I'm interested in additional things. For example, legal positions they might take, political positions that go beyond policymaking and lobbying. And I wonder, and I think this was the basis why the item was initially pulled last month when it came to us, I wonder what quality control, what ability, if any, this board has to control taxpayer dollars going to an institution that is not just making policymaking and lobbying decisions, that is not just assisting our local academic Senate in the seven enumerated items, but is pursuing a separate agenda that may or may not have the support of this board, may or may not have the support of the electorate in this district, indeed, may not have the support of the electorate throughout the state of California. How do we get a handle on that?
I think one of the, oh, hello, my turn. I think one of the ways is you work with your local Senate, and you give us a message or information that you would like us to share at our state plenary sessions, and then we can bring it to that body for discussion. But as far as the local Senate making an impact on their larger, we work within our own constituency, and we're one of 112 colleges. And that's our role within the larger state academic Senate. Now, in terms of the state academic Senate joining and supporting some of the decisions of the local academic Senate's that might have, in the past, been in disagreement with the local board, they'll do that to a certain degree. And I think we have a precedent set when we did Board Policy 4011.1. And actually, I think Lewis and I and another past president is sitting here. And at that point, in order to make sure that faculty had a reasonable voice in faculty hiring criteria and policy, that the state academic Senate then joined us in our legal, how can we say this, our legal dispute with the adopted board policy. And at that point, actually, it was really quite helpful for the district. The precedent does exist that even, no, really, it was.
Well, that's a debatable question.
Oh, it was not.
But be that as it may, you're still not addressing the point, President Dominguez.
Well, no, I am.
You're not. Because we're talking here about a situation where the academic Senate is not furthering the articulated interests of the current, of the local Senate on issues within the purview of the local academic Senate. You're talking about issues that are contentious in the community, that are not something that you have a constituency to address, and are not something that has been articulated in your own presentation, telling us what the Senate does and why we need to support it.
Well, actually, I think it is. I would...
So, what if we just give, you know, let's give half of it?
Half of it? No. And I will tell you why. Can you please go to Exhibit B, page three or four? Because there's something that was actually, as I read it, I said, you know, that's really, it's not really accurate. And if you go down to the third Black Bullet Point, it says, strengthen local academic Senate. And I would take out the word academic Senate and put, strengthen colleges. Because the accreditation institute wasn't just attended by, you're asking what they do to help. Please allow me. The accreditation institute wasn't even, wasn't not only attended by college presidents and division deans and faculty members, it was also attended by trustee Fuentes, who came and was a part of this discussion. For the curriculum institute, well, we need the academic Senate is the body that facilitates the dissemination of information from the state chancellor's Senate to the faculty, to the local Senate, and has a real and practical impact upon our ability to develop classes that transfer and allow us to have agreements with the Cal States. Curriculum is at the core of what we do. And so, if we don't have up-to-date information, then we won't know how to write courses that stay in compliance with the requirements of the Cal States and the UCs. And that curriculum institute is not only attended by, allow me to finish. You started. I get to go.
You're not answering the question, but go ahead.
No, I am answering the question. You're asking me what the local Senate's do to...
No, I'm asking you, why don't we just pay half? That was the question. And you said, let me answer that. And I'm not hearing that answer.
That's like saying, pay half of your taxes. Go ahead. You won't, you won't get the credit. You won't get the full service of the academic Senate.
Well, we don't want the full service of the academic Senate, because some of the service of the academic Senate is inconsistent with the policy directions of this board.
That's like paying...
We'd like the academic Senate to do items one through seven. We'd like the academic Senate's to strengthen local, well, we have two problems. We have colleges, you said academic Senate's. Earlier, IVC says articulation, and it means accreditation. I think if nothing else, these documents come back to us next month with some proofreading. But answer the questions. Why can't we give something less than 100 cents on the dollar? Because the services they're providing are above and beyond the 100 cents. And I'll give you an example where this is done. And it's in my own profession, the state mar. If you, you have to belong to the safe bar to practice. But you do not have to pay 100% of the membership if you wish money not be directed towards certain political goals that have nothing to do with the actual practice of law. What about going to the academic Senate and saying, here, at the state, here are your choices. We can give you 80%, 75%, 50%, or nothing. That's where our board is. What's wrong with that? What's wrong with coming back next month, getting an answer to that question, and getting documents that don't need to be edited, that, you know, don't have the errors that you both identified?
President Wagner, I think that the conclusion you've reached still rests upon an assumption that I'm not clear upon, which is there are issues that the academic Senate is advancing that do not match the goals of this district. And without specifically identifying those areas, it's very difficult to respond to your question. Because every time we've tried to come up with some sort of response, we seem to be off topic. So, it would be helpful to know what specific areas you think the academic Senate of the state of California is not coinciding with the goals of the district.
It's pushing a pretty political agenda in the courts at the moment. Trustee Lang?
Yes, I wasn't certain whether we had actually made a motion on this or not, or where we're at on this item.
There is a motion.
There is a motion and a second.
It's been seconded. In that case, I will call for the question.
Second.
All right. A non-debatable issue.
It's not showing.
And I have a request that is late from the student to speak. All right. The request has been with pride. The motion carries on a five to two vote with one absence.
No, we're back to the vote.
That is correct. We are back to the vote on the item, as the matter has been called, moved, and seconded. And let's vote on the underlying item. And again, the matter carries on a five to two vote with one absence. Item 6.4 is the five-year construction plan. And let me, it's here for approval. Let me turn that over to the chancellor to present.
The five-year construction plan.
Turn on your microphone.
Thank you. This five-year construction plan is being presented to you. This has to be sent to Sacramento. And if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Some of the items, you'll notice, are different from the ones that were on last year's plan. Those have been completed, and so, this is a new order of issues.
All right. Trustee Lang?
Yes, I thought I had some questions about this item, and, which I had a chance to inquire about. But I think it's worth, perhaps, a fuller discussion on that. And that is that a close review of the item will show that there are old priority items that have dropped off the list, and not all of which were because those items were completed. And so, I think it would be helpful to know when this item is presented, why, you know, what the status of those items are. Secondly, I noticed that on the ATEP items, those have been associated with IVC specifically. And I know that our relationship issues are still, I think, being discussed and vetted. And so, I'll just leave it at that to perhaps have somebody from administration address those items.
Chancellor Bullock?
Yes, I'd like to address the second half first, and then I will ask Brandy Delena to address the items that have been removed. The issue of the ATEP items being associated with IVC, in speaking with the ACCJC regarding accreditation issues, it appears that the ATEP, at least the, those things having to do with instruction, will need to be associated with one campus or the other. In our meetings, the two presidents, the two vice chancellors and myself, and Randy Peebles from ATEP, we've discussed this a great deal. And it appears that probably it would be better, for a number of reasons, to associate the ATEP with IVC. For one thing, of course, is the obvious closeness of the site to IVC. The other issue is President Burnett has informed me that the only program that Saddleback has there at this time, that where more than half of the program is at ATEP, is the Rapid Tech program. And everything else has actually been removed or gone away. So, but we're still working on it. We are working on an MOU or a white paper that will identify the future as we go forward with it, and probably will separate instruction from developmental sorts of things. So, that, I hope that answers your second part of your question.
Just comment about that. Since this is, I guess, a five-year plan relative to ATEP, are we saying that the ATEP items that are on here really relate to the instructional side of the house in terms of, I think that's probably, perhaps, well, I don't know. Because we've got our existing site up there, which is up and running. These seem like they have more to do with the long-term aspects of the project. And, you know, certainly, I'm not interested in making a mountain out of a molehill here. But I think it's important, once we go down this path, that we have some pretty clear direction in terms of, you know, separating one from the other, if in fact, that's the way we're planning on pursuing this.
I think the answer to that is that since we have not completely formulated that at this time, and that this document is due right away, that we've had to list them as part of one college or the other, this item will come back to the board when we formulate the way we would like to divide this up. And at that point, I'm sure that when the next go-round, we can correct those issues. Perhaps Director Delena can help us with that.
So, it sounds like you want me to elaborate further on the question of the IVC designation for ATEP to start with. Is that from you?
Yes, please. And how that can be corrected if need be.
Okay. First off, the state is very black and white about the way that they see our campuses. And when it comes to a campus that hasn't yet acquired center status, it's necessary for the state to see it aligned with one or the other of our campuses. And so, early on, years ago, actually, the decision was made to align at the state level, ATEP with IVC. So, if there were a decision in the next few months or during the course of the next year, which is actually going to be a very active year relative to facilities because of our educational and facilities master planning process that's underway right now, during the course of those processes, if we make a decision to align it with Saddleback when we get ready to submit our next five-year plan, which actually is an annual submittal, go figure, then we can make that correction at that time. Helpful?
Okay, yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Did you want to address the first part of my question?
First part of the question was asking me about those items which have been removed from last year's list or changed in priority. I'm happy to announce that the first five items from last year's list are completed construction projects. And then, item number seven, which was the removal of the B400 and POP1 portables, is also a completed item. We've got two other missing items on our priority list. The first one is the tennis courts over at Saddleback College. We took that one off the list because of a relocation to the Sciences Building. When we were developing the FPP, which is the final project plan for the state chancellor's submittal, we moved the Sciences Building from the current tennis court location up into Parking Lot 7, which is more central to the campus location. Parking Lot 7 is the parking lot that's down two hills from the library. There's a parking lot immediately adjacent to the library, and then the next one down. And that's the proposed location for the new Sciences Building. Previously, it had been located at the tennis courts. So, we no longer have to move the tennis courts because of the relocation of the building, and that was taken off the list. The other one was the ATEP and Hangar Utility Project. There is no need for those utilities at either the hangar or, oh, sorry, in the chapel. Either one of those locations no longer needs a utility upgrade. So, that one's also been taken off the list. And then, the list that you see in front of you, the remaining list, of that list, item one is currently under construction. And I apologize. What I'll do for you next year is, in a parentheses behind the list of the project, I'll give you a little update on where we are with it. So, the library renovation is under construction right now. The Life Sciences Building will go out to bid, is anticipated to go out to bid in January, February timeframe. The Sciences Building over at Saddleback College is listed as a number three priority and has been a high priority for a long time based... and has been a high priority for a long time based on the problems we're having with the Mass Science Engineering Building on this campus right now. And so that's its reason, the reason for its current location. And then ATEP demolition moved up quite a bit in your list, and that's because we had such a successful time with the last, in the last year with the city of Tustin and arriving at solutions for moving forward with this project. After that, there's a few more projects listed there. But we get to about project number eight, project number nine, and then we start getting into projects that will further and better define through our educational and facilities master plan. This list was defined from the 2006 educational and facilities master plan, and we expect through this process that there'll be a little bit of upheaval happening on the bottom portions of this. And so I wouldn't be too concerned with what's stated beyond that, because I expect they'll change quite a bit next year.
Follow-up?
Anything? Go ahead.
I noticed that in our capital outlay fund in the budget, which we haven't gotten to yet, I understand, but I think it ties in with this item, we have allocated uses of funds of $168 million. Now, I suspect that not all of that is going to be spent in the current year.
Correct.
But I am interested in hearing from you how much of that may be spent in the current year, and how far down the list we may get with this five-year plan.
Okay. The James V. At Library renovation, like I said, it's under construction. The amount for that project is, sorry, I didn't expect this question, so it's going to take me just a second. The library project was originally estimated at the state level for $21 million. Of that, 4.9 million is an expenditure that's expected from the district. So that 4.9 million is under spending right now because that project's underway. The Life Sciences Building is a project that, just one second.
And I didn't intend for you to go through it project by project.
Okay.
But really, I'm just trying to get a sense.
Off the top kind of forced view, I'd say no greater than, say, 20 million would be the maximum amount that's spent over the course of this year. That's a real grab.
Okay. I guess the thing that concerns me a bit is, is we've all, we've already approved a lot of these projects. Some do not involve a state contribution, a state match, and that may be something we want to come back to, it seems to me, in terms of whether we want to move ahead even without that in some critical areas. But I guess the concern I have is, is we all feel this is a very good time to be spending dollars on construction for a variety of reasons.
Absolutely.
Boosting the economy, probably the costs of doing construction aren't going to get a lot lower than they are now, presumably, et cetera. And I guess is part of the constraint that we don't have enough individuals to manage these projects, or what are the constraints for not being more aggressive in terms of our capital outlay situation? Space limitations in terms of moving things around? Just give me a, kind of a feel for that.
Human resources is one major constraint, although we've managed to bridge that gap by hiring consultants to assist us with the development of projects, and we could do more of that if that was a desire of the board. We do have agreements that we've made with the state chancellor's office relative to this five-year plan and how we plan to expend. I don't expect that there would be a great deal of resistance if we chose to escalate our expenditures. The time it takes to design a project goes anywhere from, depending on the nature of the project, nine months to 18 months. So if we haven't already started the design process on a project, we have that kind of a gap before we actually would be breaking ground. And then, of course, DSA approvals is another aspect that would create a delay in seeing any kind of action.
So what you're really saying is a rather lengthy pipeline that we're talking about.
It is.
And even though we're showing a very large amount for a capital outlay in our current budget, that's somewhat misleading because that money isn't going to be spent for quite a long period of time.
Correct. You, members of the board, have taken quite a bit into consideration and taken basic aid money and assigned it to projects that you've identified and that district processes have identified as important, and diligently attempted to fund those projects year by year instead of getting hit hard with a big number all at once. I think I heard you say that perhaps we would want to consider a shuffling of those funds, and we've done that over the last three years.
Right. I, just speaking from one trustee's, you know, perspective, I know that we've been doing this consistently from year to year for a while. And I guess maybe there is a sense of impatience of wanting to see more done sooner.
I feel the same.
Trustee Fuentes.
Brandy, I understand that you need to get this report sent to the bureaucracy in Sacramento, and so that's what, why it's here. But help me clearly understand by your confirming nod that before any of these items actually proceed, we're going to have times to see them again before this board.
For the most part, I can say that's true. Some of them have already proceeded. For instance, the James V. At Library is under construction. The Life Sciences Building is under design and ready to go to bid. But the process that we have in place, I suppose that's a little bit more than a confirming nod. The process we have in place is that when we get ready to spend the money that you've approved for a project, we come to you and ask for your approval on the expenditure of funds. So you will see it again.
I want to get that on the record because this does include ATEP expenditures. And at our last board meeting, when we were not on camera and the record was not so public, I expressed my end of patience with ATEP. I do not favor going forward with that project. I believe it is a white elephant and a deep, dark hole, and I will not be voting for spending money on ATEP. And so I will be voting to give you the ability to send this report, but knowing that we can change it downstream and vote against projects on an individual basis.
Yes, I understand.
For the record, thank you.
Seeing no further requests to speak, let's vote on the item. Moved and seconded. Thank you very much for keeping me on task. Matter carries unanimously, and we are rejoined by trustee Padberg. So that means it is time to go back to item 6.2, which we skipped earlier, and that is the adoption of the final budget. Moved and seconded. Thank you. And let's begin, well, shall we begin with the chancellor? You can pitch it to whoever you want.
Before you are the documents from Saddleback College, Irvine Valley College, the district, and ATEP regarding the budget for 2010 and 2011. And with that, I would like to call on Dr. Bougaye and Director Mueller to help with that discussion.
Thank you, Chancellor Bullock. We're very fortunate in our district. Part of our fortune comes from the location and the taxpayers that fund our district since we're a basic aid district. Part of our fortune also comes from the board of trustees, who over the year has made certain that we're fiscally prudent in our manners. But also, I have to also mention their chancellor, our presidents, that watch over the budget on a regular basis and take strong leadership in making certain that we maintain our fiscal solvency. Another major people we should be grateful to is also Carol Hilton and Devi Ketcheran. They watch the budgets at the college. They watch, they squeeze every single penny possible out of the budget. But another person I'm really grateful to work with is Beth Mueller. She's our district director of fiscal services. She does a remarkable job. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to her so she could sing and dance for you to her best. Beth?
Good evening. I'll start with our final budget in a little more detail for you. Okay. First, we have a slide on the overview of the budget. Our general fund is $224.6 million. The general fund has two segments to it, the unrestricted funds and our restricted. Unrestricted budget for next year is $204.3 million, and the restricted fund is $20.3 million. There are other funds in our budget, such as community ed, child development, capital outlay, self-insurance, and our retiree benefit funds. Those total $261.9 million for a total budget of all funds of $486.5 million. Some of the assumptions that we've made in the current budget, as you're aware, the state has not approved a final budget yet, so the assumptions that we use for our final budget are based on the May revised budget by the governor. Included in our budget is a negative COLA of 0.38%. We also have growth funding of 2.2%. This gives our SB 361 allocation an increase of 2.8 million over last year. We have a one-time adjustment to our DRAC model, which is the model we use to fund the colleges, of 1.6 million. The general fund ending balance that is carried forward from 2009-10 is $26.8 million. Some of the additional assumptions, we have a 7.5% reserve for economic uncertainties. Our health and welfare benefits increased, our entire package increased approximately 4.6%. Our property and liability insurance, due to some changes, we made minor changes, is experiencing a decrease, a good thing, of 12%. Hers, our public employee retirement system, is increasing from 10.7, or to 10.7 from 9.7, a full percentage point over last year. Unemployment insurance is also increasing. In 9-10, it was 0.3%. In the upcoming year, 10-11, it is 0.72%. Our 2010-11 final budget includes no salary increase for administrators, managers, faculty, or police officers. However, it does include a 1% increase for CSEA, and this is in accordance with their current contract. Listed before you are basic aid receipts. These are actual numbers for the past 11 years since we became a basic aid district. The last number for 2010-11 is estimated, an estimated number for our property tax receipts, and this is $38,984,025. Now, this number we arrive at in, I go to the, or confer with the Orange County Auditor Controller's Office, get information from them on what to expect on our property taxes in the upcoming year. And their information said that we can expect a decrease of approximately 1% in our secured property taxes, which is the greatest source of property tax revenue that we have. As you'll see, there's a couple other little asterisks there. That's where our basic aid money declined from 2008-9 to 9-10. Mainly, that's because of an increase in revenue that, from growth, that went to the colleges. As you know, basic aid is one pot, and, you know, what we call basic aid is what's left over after our SB 361 allocation to the colleges. Okay, included in the budget, we have certain things. This is really no different from the tentative budget. Some funds that we would like allocated from basic aid, $8 million for our retiree benefit expenses, and I'll talk a little bit more in the next slide about that. We have $2.1 million for the ATEP operating budget. The trustee election cost, $892,000. This is an estimate from the Orange County Department of Education. I really don't expect it to be this high, but I think it's best to be conservative in our estimates and take the higher amount. And then if it does come in lower, it will be returned to the basic aid pot, as I call it, for reallocation by the board. And then we have $33.7 million available for funding for future capital projects. Okay, our last slide addresses the retiree benefit trust. We have an actuarial study done every two years as required by Gatsby 45 and 43. Our study was completed in May, this past May, May of 2010. As a result, we have an updated actuarial accrued liability of $61,189,900. The unfunded portion of this liability is approximately $4.9 million. We have, this is due to increased benefit costs and additional payroll and things like that. Our annual OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefit Cost, the accrual for existing employees, so this is the amount that we need to set aside every year for the people who are currently working at the district, is a little bit more than $2.5 million. And the current estimated retiree premiums, premiums that we pay for current retirees, people that have already retired, is approximately $2.6, $2.7 million. So our total basic aid contribution that we're asking for this year is $8 million. And that's the conclusion of my presentation. Are there any questions?
Trustee Fuentes.
Could you speak a little further to this point? The top one, the actuarial study, and this unfunded amount of, for nearly $5 million? What did we see a year ago when the budget was presented to us? What would the number have been then?
Well, that's hard to tell because this number is determined by the actuarial study, and our actuary only does a study every two years. And so we could expect another unfunded, I mean, there's two ways to look at this. We could expect another unfunded liability in another two years if our benefits, medical benefits, the cost of those increased significantly over the next two years, and our payroll would increase also. Also, or should our investment in the trust have a better-than-expected return, then maybe there will be no liability or a reduced liability. But we actually don't know for sure until we have an actuarial study in which he takes into consideration, you know, just a lot of demographics, people's ages, average age of retirement, the cost of benefits, and so forth.
Perhaps I should have said then that the last time that such a number was reported to the board, what was that number?
This is the first actuarial study that we've had since we funded the trust completely. The trust was established and funded two years ago, and at that time, the accrued liability was a little more than $15 million, and we funded it completely at that time. This is the first study that we've had since we fully funded the trust.
Well, I believe that we have taken pride in saying that we have no unfunded liability in this district. So this is a rather significant announcement.
You're correct.
Trustee Milchker.
That's what I was going to follow up on. You're requesting the basic aid contribution for 210 and 211 to pay off this existing liability and the accrued liability. Aren't you, isn't that what you're requesting?
Yes.
So after that, so in essence, we will have no unfunded.
That's correct.
Liability. So I just think this is incredible, and I just, I don't know if you know this, but would you know how many other community college districts in the state have actually paid off of their unfunded liability like we have?
I do not know exactly how many, but I could say pretty, feeling fairly certain that we are one of a very small population that is fully funded.
That's what I would suspect. So I really want to congratulate all of us for... That's what I would suspect. So, I really want to congratulate all of us for being able to do this. And this is not only helping us, but this is also helping future boards because we're not leaving any unfunded liability, unfunded cost to future boards to have to worry about paying off. We're really doing our job now. I also would like to know if you could send me a copy of this PowerPoint presentation?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you so much. It's very, very clear, and I really would like a copy of it. And could you also say, because our total source of funds is $486,000, that our budget is close to half a billion dollars? Is that accurate?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The budget has grown so incredibly, and our resources have grown so incredibly since I've been a trustee, it's just really kind of unimaginable to, it's not, it's really, I've really experienced an incredible growth in this college district and the two colleges and ATEP, and I'm just so proud to be a part of all of this. So, thank you so much.
Trustee Jay.
Yes, Beth, you can jog my memory on this, but as I recall, we paid off our unfunded liability two years ago, funded it completely.
Yes.
And then, of course, our investments went from pretty good to worse, as everybody's did in the entire economy. And at that point, our unfunded liability, since our $50 million investment, had decreased to 41, as I recall.
You're right.
You can jog my memory. But then, our unfunded liability was up at 11 or 12 million, briefly, and then the market turned around. We moved some investments around, I believe, I'm not sure. It's all done by professionals outside the district. And we came up to the point where I believe that that account is now like 56 million, isn't it? It was 50 million, it's back to 56 million, and that left an unfunded amount of about 4.9. Is that correct, roughly?
It's not quite that high. It's in the range of maybe between 52 to 53 million.
52 to 53, okay. Okay. But I think a good job is good done. And I remember, I was quite critical, frankly, of Gary and some of the investments he'd made in this meeting about a year ago because I felt he should be going with fixed income investments, and nothing in the equities area, which can go sour on you badly quickly. But anyway, the investments have turned out to be good.
About one year ago, we did have, like the whole rest of the world, we actually had a decrease.
Of course.
And to be honest, the investment overall, the whole, the mix that we did, it came back relatively strong. This $8 million, we're playing catch-up a little bit because of the increase in the overall liability, 60 million.
I think the current unfunded amount is certainly acceptable compared relatively with other districts, many of which have never tried to pay off their accrued liability. And it's huge for many districts.
And this will bring us back to that status again.
Trustee Williams.
Trustee Jay covered exactly what I recall, being on the audit committee, and Trustee Milchker and Wagner, we discussed this briefly. But when we complied with the Gatsby 45 standard, I believe it was in mid-2008 that we established the trust. It was an irrevocable trust, so the future boards cannot take that money. However, as we all know, the market tanked, and since then, the market has recovered. But this fund, if you look at the bullet points in front of the board members, the accrued liability versus the unfunded liability, in normal situations where you have a once-in-a-century crash of a market, if you will, had, tell me if I'm wrong, but if, under normal circumstances, the retirement fund stirs, pers, osers, look at a 7% to 8% rate of return. If we had had a normal rate of return of, say, 7%, our unfunded amount could be zero tonight, correct?
Possible.
That's what I thought. So, this reflects when we put the money in the trust fund in mid-'08, the market tanks, and our trust fund value went down. It's recovered, but not recovered to the point where we thought it would be. So, this, we're in good shape, but we're like any, you know, many individual investors, we, our fund took a hit with the market in '08. We're recovering. So, tonight, the basic aid contribution before us is more than it would have been in a normal economic circumstance with a 6%, 7%, 8% rate of return each year. So, have we moved this item yet?
We have.
Okay.
There are a couple more questions or comments. Let me jump in here because I haven't spoken to it. Trustee Jay asked a question, and I thought he was right, and your answer said, no, he's wrong, and now you've got me confused. I look at your bullet point here, updated actuarial accrued liability of roughly $61 million. Unfunded amount, roughly $5 million. That would indicate to me a funded amount of roughly $56 million, because I then add it and I get to 61. And that's what Trustee Jay said, and he said, no, it's 52. Well, you're missing $4 million, and I just don't know where it went.
The numbers come from the actuarial study, and they take their figures at certain points in time. And so, and they also level those things out over a period of years. And so, you know, even our return on investment is expected over a long period of time, not in any one year. And so, the amounts that they took were from much earlier in the year, and the numbers that I was quoting are very recent, just in the last couple of weeks from when I checked the statements.
So, in the last couple of weeks, we've made back $4 million?
We have, as of, in the last couple of weeks, the amount in the trust with Morgan Stanley was between 52 and 53 million, as I recall. The numbers that the actuary, again, it's, you know, it's an actuarial study, and he looks at a figure and then looks at a return on investment and plans it out a long time. So, I don't think you can do the math and come up with the, you know, what we had at a certain point, and then the unfunded liability. It's much more complex than that.
But isn't that where you came up with your $8 million figure, is doing that math?
Well, no, the actuary came up with a 4.9 million. It's in the, it's in the report that he gave us.
No, no, no. The 4.9 is the unfunded amount, right?
Right.
Okay. You're asking for 8 million.
Right.
Why are you asking for 8 million if it's unfunded of 4.9?
Oh, because the additional 2.5 million is what we have to pay each year for our current employees and set it aside.
Okay. That's a real number? That's not a number over time?
That's a number in the study that he projects we need to set aside for the next two years. It will be updated the next time he does a study. The last time he did a study, two years ago, that number was 1.8 million, and so, it's been revised upward.
To fund, to fund, completely fund the unfunded amount, how much do we need to pay?
Okay, you need the 4.9 million to bring us to the 61, but then each year, you also have to set aside 2.5.
I get that. I get that. Each year, we got to put more in.
Right.
This year, I'm just, I'm looking at, this year, you're saying, and I apologize if I'm missing this, you're saying we owe 61 to fully fund it.
Right.
We have 52 in the bank. To get from 52 to 61, we need to put in 5. And I'm saying, no. That math doesn't work.
It doesn't add up. Right.
You have to put in 8. Well, then, where's the 2.5? But you're now asking for an additional 2.5, aren't you?
To get to the 61, you need to put in the 4.9.
Right.
Which, if we only have 52 in there, we're not going to have enough. But what the actuary is saying is that if you put this, you need to, that's the unfunded amount, you need to put that in. And over time, it will grow. And he's calculating that and saying that's all we need to do right now.
Trustee Fuentes, help.
Can I make a comment?
In a minute, in a minute, in a minute, Trustee Fuentes has the floor.
Could it be that the base 52, Dawn, which you speak about, plus the 5, takes us to 57, plus down here, this year's accrual for existing employees is the missing piece? Is that what we're perhaps seeing?
In essence, right now, we have 4.9 million unfunded. But we also had an increase with the accrual for existing employees of 2.5. When you add the numbers together, we're really at that level of $8 million. 61 million, if you take the 8 million from that, we're about 52 to 53 million currently funded.
I have the actuarial study with me, and in here, it says, in January 2010, the actuarial value of the planned assets was $56,250,666. And so, that, it said that, this leaves an unfunded accrued liability of 4.9 million. Does that help you? This was in January of 2010. And he tries to do his calculations based at the same period of time each time he does it, so there's consistency to the reports.
Well, no, that doesn't help because as I now do the math, that Trustee Fuentes points out, and appropriately so, I was trying to do it that way, and it still doesn't. 2.5 million plus 2.6 million is 5.1 million. On top of 4.9 million is 10 million, but you're only asking for 8.
Okay, the...
Good enough for government work, I guess. Trustee Jay, you're going to help me.
Well, Mr. President, I'm not finished.
Oh, I'm sorry. Trustee Jay, hang on. Trustee Fuentes still has the floor. I apologize. I thought you were done.
Where I was leading with this, Beth, is I felt that when Trustee Milchker was speaking, that there was some confusion and that, or an impression left that could be confusing, that if we, we fund this 49, 4.9 million, that when we come to the next time we see this study, two years out.
Yes.
If we put these dollars in for a current year or upcoming year contribution, for two years, that we should be whole. But history has taught us that that didn't work. That's why we have
Yes.
this $5 million gap. Should we be then looking back and adjusting our contingency and the amount of money that we are, and the level that we are providing in our contingency reserves? Should that be adjusted in order to cover that? And maybe that's a question that needs Dave's input.
I wouldn't say that, I guess it's up, you know, the decision is definitely yours. However, I think if we put aside a little bit each year, instead of, you know, coming now, hopefully in two years, we'll have more set aside so that we won't have, if we should have another unfunded liability, we won't have as much to set aside. And again, if the market performs very well, then there may be no unfunded liability at all. We can't see into the future at this point.
We do need to address that. The, there's a couple factors here. Number one, I, when we first initiated the fund, frankly, it was brilliant financial planning by the district. I wasn't here, so I can't take any credit for that at all. But I'll, basically, it's the board that made that decision and some good financial expertise we have that exists here still today. The, nobody expected the market to tank like it did. It did. We came back strong. But Trustee Fuentes, I think you're correct. If we had a large number of retirees leave, we'd have to sit down and compensate for this, on this end over here as well. So, we have to do plan for the future, and I do think the next time our board meets, that will be a topic of our discussion. Right now, we do think that the $8 million will fully cover our unfunded liability. At this point, there are market fluctuations that happened, even from the point when we first presented this to the board a couple months ago. We had some changes, you know, in the, in the actual market itself that affected this fund. So, I think long-term, we need to do some planning, and we'll be discussing that at the next board meeting for contingency purposes.
Trustee Jay is desperately trying to set me straight.
Yeah, look, these numbers on both ends are moving targets, okay? Not only do you have additional liabilities that come in every year, but people die who are retired and they stop taking the money out. So, so, give me, let me give you an example. As I say, as a math prof for God knows how long, 40 years, but, you know, they go to my taxman and I'd say, hey, I owe 4,500 bucks. He says, no, you don't. You owe 11,000. So, I showed him what I was doing. He said, you know what you're doing? You're doing math. You're just moving numbers around. He said, I'm figuring taxes. So, sure as heck, he says, go home, get a package of TurboTax, and plug it in and see if I'm not right. So, being very carefully and entering everything according to the instructions, TurboTax came out with exactly what I owed, that my accountant told me I owed. But that's what you're dealing with here. The numbers will never match when we're just sitting here doing math without benefit of a calculator, any one of us right here. So, she's right.
Thank you. If I could just clarify, and I hope I don't confuse you more, but the current estimated retiree premiums, the 2.6 million, those are paid by the trust, the money that you've already set aside. So, the trust pays that. So, you have the trust sending money to pay the premiums, and then we have to make contributions also.
Can I move the question?
You got a couple more requests to speak. Trustee Williams.
Well, I was just going to say, if, what we're doing here is making the fund whole for this year. If we have a good rate of return, which I believe our trust fund is accruing a much better rate of return than the county treasury where our normal budget money is earning about 1%, what was the rate of return last year on this, 2.5 or 3?
You know, I don't recall.
It's much better than the county treasury, which is a very conservative pool. So, theoretically, I don't want to prolong this anymore, but in a year, when we're sitting here in a year doing this very same meeting, the number owed could be at or near zero, correct, if there's a good rate of return? A good rate of return on the trust fund could cause we would have no accrued liability, no unfunded amount, and we may not have to contribute anything. That's all.
Trustee Lang.
Okay. Let me see if I can confuse things a little bit more here, if that's even possible. Actually, I think, I think Trustee Jay made some good comments. I will not comment on his tax preparation advice at all. I'll leave that to him and his accountant.
I wouldn't suggest that we agree, but no.
But, but you hit the nail on the head, and that is, there's, and Beth, you've, I think you've stated the case pretty well, which is that there's just a lot of moving parts to this whole thing, which is the reason that we do an actuarial study. And we're sort of mixing apples and oranges a little bit because the contingency reserve that we set aside for the district is really to cover our own internal contingency issues, which are separate and distinct from what we're trying to accomplish here, I think, with the retiree benefits fund. I think what we've done is we've, we've got our updated actuarial study. It's identified exactly the number that we need to fund to in order to make this current, and what contribution is required to that. Then, on top of that, we need to make, obviously, an existing accrual. And then, out of the fund, as you've pointed out, and I think that was a key point, is there will be retiree premiums that will be made. Obviously, the, the actual results or activities are going to differ from what's in the actuarial study because that's real life.
That's right.
As you mentioned, Bill, we're going to have additional people that are tapping into benefits from the trust. We're going to have some people that pass away. We're going to have new people that are coming into the, the system. So, just an awful lot of moving parts. And that's why, unfortunately, Trustee Wagner, you're not able to get the math exactly to line up the way you'd like to. You would if you were able to really tear apart the actuarial study that was, you know, that was being made and get into all the assumptions that were made in order to get to those numbers. So, bottom line is, is we're, obviously, we're doing the right thing. We did take a hit in the market, which is why we've got some making up to do here. And, and so, you know, obviously, we're moving in the right direction here. But I have some, I don't know whether, I know the trustees are getting anxious to sort of move the, the budget along, but I had some, I guess, some items unrelated to the Gatsby 43 and 45 in our retirement benefits trust. And is this the appropriate time?
You have the floor. You have the floor. Go ahead.
Okay. A couple of points that I guess I want to make, and that is, which really speaks more to the college budgets. One is, I'm, I think if you read the, some of the narrative that was provided by the college presidents, you look at the pie charts in terms of the breakdown of things, you know, a couple of things concern me. Obviously, we heard, I think loud and clear from, you know, President Todd Burnett, Saddleback College, that we've got some various, very serious deferred maintenance issues that need to be addressed at, at Saddleback College. And in fact, they've devoted, and I give you much credit for this, a substantial amount of your budget to address some of those, some of those issues. IVC, being not as older of a campus, doesn't have perhaps the same level of serious deferred maintenance issues. But I am concerned as to whether IVC is in fact setting aside enough dollars for deferred maintenance. You've got close to 90% of your budget that's really being absorbed by, you know, salary and benefit type costs, not much left for other kinds of things. And one of the things that I'm worried about, obviously, is deferred maintenance getting to the point where all of a sudden, it becomes a capital outlay need, and needs to be addressed through basic aid. And, you know, I just think that's a very serious discussion that we need to have as a group within this district. I don't know that we're going to necessarily be able to cover all the points to that now. The other thing, though, that, you know, I think needs to come up is, obviously, trustee Fuentes expressed his viewpoint about the dollars that we're investing in ATEP. That issue also came up very clearly in the Saddleback accreditation report. There were a number of other issues that came up relative to finances. I certainly didn't agree with all of the points that were represented in the report, but it was certainly the college's opinion, and I think they were very much entitled to it. And I think that many of the issues that they raised were very good issues that ought to be addressed. We've got those accreditation reports. We needed to devote some time to discussing the items that have been raised as a group. And I, frankly, I'd like to see that agendized sometime in the near future, so that we can have that sort of serious discussion, which is very much connected to this budget, so.
Trustee Lang.
Just so you know, in the recent board update, I mentioned about the, the meetings we're going to be having on that. In the next month, we'll be meeting, Brandy, myself, we'll be meeting with John Edwards and John Ozerovich. We're going to talk specifically about the facility needs, so we can start developing a plan that specifically addresses building components and life expectancy. Then also, I'll be meeting with Beth, Devit, Carol, myself will be meeting, we'll be talking about the financial component. And then we're going to put all the pieces together later on, and try to present the board with a good comprehensive picture that deals with future value dollars for a 20-year plan, as well as specific building components and their, the different life expectancies of them. So we hope to try to embrace that issue, define the problem well, and then come back to the board of trustees with a more thorough report, so we can start doing some long-term planning, and also talk about how we do basic aid allocations and so on, in a systematic method that can actually address our facility needs.
Very much welcome that discussion. Thank you.
Seeing no further requests to speak, we will vote on the item. Matter carries unanimously. We are at item 6.5, which is the Irvine Valley College Landscaping Project. It's here for approval. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I move.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Let's vote on the item. Matter carries unanimously. Item 6.6, here for approval and agreement for Real Estate Services. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. Trustee Fuentes.
I wonder if we could have a presentation from the acting chancellor on the potential cost of this, and the, a review of the points for our viewing audience.
Yes, right now.
Well, I'm going to punt, because Vice Chancellor Bougaye has been doing the work on this, so he can give you a better explanation than I, unless he needs to punt, too.
Fortunately, tonight, I have with us Hudson Capital. We're in 6.6, correct?
Correct.
Okay. On this particular item, I've asked the, representatives from Hudson to address this issue, so they're on hand to do that. So trustee Fuentes, would it be appropriate to have them speak?
Well, I'd like to hear from district staff, not from consultants. I'd like to know what you anticipate as real cost to the district. I'd like to know the nature, we're hiring real estate folks here. Are we paying them a fee, like we're paying Hudson Capital on a consulting basis? Are they doing this for commission? I'd like the, the scope of that from the district perspective explained, please.
Okay. The Hudson Capital's role is that of a developer. The role here is that, that we pay a straight commission to CB Ellis to actually go through and seek partners for us. We do not pay a fee unless they obtain, attain a partner for us. And they get a fee over the, the long-term lease. So, and I think the fee is 4%, if I'm not mistaken. Four point.
For the first 60 months.
Yes.
Depends on whether it's co-broker.
Yes.
And would this fee affect if we're doing agreements with public entities as well as with private entities?
If it comes through this organization, the entree, yes, it would. And it would be a percentage fee based upon the overall cost and, and the revenues generated from that.
So if a rental lease arrangement was made with a government, like Cal State Fullerton or UCI or a public entity like that, a commission is being paid?
If it was through this agency, the entree, yes, it would.
Thank you. Trustee Lang.
Yes, I had some similar questions, I guess, and I'd welcome, obviously, our consultants if they'd like to come up and, you know, feel that they can address some of, some of the questions that we have on this item. I wanted to make certain, in fact, that this was more or less a standard type of an arrangement. I looked at, it, it appeared to me that the commission structure was maybe a little bit generous here, I don't know. I saw, you know, co-broker situation of where they were acting alone, basically representing both sides, 6% commission, and where there was an outside group involved, it seemed to increase that to, to 9%. That seemed a little bit generous. That was on a gross lease type basis. On a modified or net lease basis, we were looking at an 8% commission on a, you know, to the extent that they brought the tenant to us solely, and it looked like it could be as much as 12% if we were looking at both sides. That seemed a little, a little generous to me. I'm looking at Exhibit A to the CBRE agreement, and, you know, apologize to throw this on you folks. I'd love to have representatives of CBRE here to question on this, and if you can't answer that, perhaps what I might suggest is to bring them back, so that we can ask them some questions about this. Then the other thing I wasn't certain about was how this provision regarding below-market ground lease might affect us as well.
I will be having Nadir Shaw with the Hudson Pacific Properties to discuss this with you. The, if you look at the Exhibit B, and I don't have it in front of me, but from what I recall, there, there are two separate potential transactions.
Mine didn't have Exhibit B.
Or Exhibit that you referenced.
Oh, Exhibit A. It was, it was shown as Exhibit B on one page, but then on the top right, it shows it as Exhibit A, so it's, it's a little confusing.
Right. Basically, to outline the, the details of the, of the agreement with CB Richard Ellis, they're being engaged to help the district locate additional partners or additional educational institutions that would want to co-locate at the ATEP campus, which is outside the scope of, of the services that Hudson Properties provides to the district. This is completely a success-based fee. It's a commission, so they are not going to be paid any fee unless, and until this board approves a lease, which would then trigger a commission being due and payable to the, to CBRE. Typically, in this marketplace, on a net lease basis, and I think trustee Lang, you had it just reversed, in the event that CB Richard Ellis were to procure, would be the only procuring broker in a transaction, they would get 4% of the first five years of, of revenue to income, and 2% of the balance, up to a maximum term of 15 years. In the event that there is another broker involved, who would be representing the other institution that would be interested in co-locating at the ATEP campus, that broker would then receive a 4% commission on the first five years, and a 2% commission on the balance. And CB Richard Ellis would agree to take a reduced fee, or basically a half of that, or 2% on the first five years, and 1% on the balance. So that, so the totals that could happen would be, in a, in a worst-case scenario, would be 6% of the, of the first five years of income, and 3% of the balance of that. So overall blended, that would be somewhere around 4% total fee that would be paid. This is a, this is a, this is a market fee that's typically paid on the commercial end. To, remember Fuentes' question about whether or not we would be paying a fee to, to another public entity that, that would be taking space at ATEP. In the two instances that you mentioned, Cal State Fullerton and UCI, both of those institutions are regularly represented by local real estate brokers, Spezia Corporation in, in the instance of UCI, and I believe it's Cushman and Wakefield represents UC, or Cal State Fullerton on a regular basis. So we would be paying a fee to them under normal circumstances, and they are typically represented. And that was one of the reasons why we recommended to the board that you be represented by brokers in order to level the playing field, if you will, and make sure that your interests are well represented at the table.
Okay, so it would be, actually, it's, so on a gross lease basis, it would basically be, for the first six, 60 months at least, it would be 6% if there's an outside broker involved. And in the case of a net lease, it's 7.5%.
Correct.
Okay. And, and can you explain that, how that provision regarding the below-market ground lease, leases may affect us?
Right. This is, this is an instance where we went around and around trying to negotiate out a, a fair and equitable way to do this. There is the, there is the opportunity for, and I'll use this as an example, the district decides that there, there's a tenant out there that they really would much rather have at, at ATEP, and would do anything they can to get that tenant to co-locate there with them for, for a variety of reasons, whether it's synergy, whether it's economic reasons or whatever. And they would be willing to do a, a below-market transaction in order to entice that tenant to come there. For instance, the district agreed to have a dollar a square, a dollar a year lease for the next 99 years. So the total consideration in a transaction like that would be $99, and 6% of $99 is probably not enough to get anybody interested in trying to help that transaction along. So we had to come up with a, with a mechanism that would be fair, that would allow some kind of objective measures to be put into place, where we could determine what the true value of that lease might be, and a fair compensation based on that. And, and we've, we've tried to do that in the language that you've looked there, it's been vetted by, by the attorneys for, for the team, and, and we have put an absolute cap limit on how much that potentially might be, so that we've, we believe we've built and suspended the, that liability, if you will, that the district might have in, in terms of paying a commission. Having said all that, at the end of the day, if, for any reason, any commission amount that, that comes up in this, in, in, on any transaction, obviously, the district has the ability to say yes or no to any transaction, and in the event they say no, there is no commission due.
Okay. I, I guess the, the other concern that I would have is, is, obviously, our staff is going to be very, very significantly involved, for example, in working with educational partners to make attractive cooperative relationships with them, that are going to be as much a part of enticing them to come on board with us, as, you know, the efforts perhaps that CBRE might bring to the table in those instance, instances of where they're then negotiating the deal, if you will. And just seems to me that, you know, that, that may not be the most equitable arrangement from our standpoint.
I, I understand where you're going, and, and as a developer, I'm in the same position that you are. Through relationships that we've had over years with, with various and sundry tenants, we've, we've been able to entice them into our buildings, or into our projects, or build buildings for them, for that very reason that we have that relationship with them. And I would say, in probably 99.9% of the time, a real estate fee was still paid to a broker. There's a certain amount of usefulness that the brokers are bringing to the table. They're, they're out there in the marketplace on a regular basis, giving you up-to-date information that allows you, really, to help you make your deal. They are finding opportunities that you may not have found, or that the relationships that you have may not be as strong as you think they are, and sometimes these brokers can bring more to the relationship. So I guess what I would say is that, you know, one and one sometimes equals two. In this case, we're hoping that one and one equals three, and you get the benefit of that.
You could do an actuarial study for us.
Not likely.
I just wanted to add also that, one of the key reasons that we suggested that the district bring a broker on board is, you know, there's only so much reach that we have and the district has. There's a whole, there's a massive spectrum of tenants out there. And, you know, one of, when we went through the vetting process with these brokers, we selected one that's syndicated nationwide. And it really gives us, you, the opportunity to find education partners that aren't, are not only regional here, but also could be all the way over on the East Coast, that have considered opening a West Coast campus. So we think there's definitely a lot of value to that, that the only way you're going to bring that to the table is through hiring a syndicated national broker.
Trustee Padberg.
Yes, President Rockmore was trying to get your attention.
I know, I'll get to him in a moment. Go ahead.
I, I do want to address the item, but before that, I'd like to make a motion that we continue the meeting to 9:30. It's getting close to 9 o'clock.
I second it.
Thank you.
All right. Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstention, a no's, abstentions. All right. Matter carries unanimously.
Okay.
All right, wait, 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 wait. I know you want to address the matter substantively, I will do that, but I do now want to get President Rockmore a chance to jump in to address the last item, I think.
Yes. I just wanted to address a little bit trustee's, Lang's question. I personally spent quite a lot of time working with some of our academic partners, and the problem that we had is that educationally, and the way that we were working out our relationship that way, was working famously. But inevitably, we would get to the point where, what's it going to cost us to, to be a part of this? Every single time, we would get hit with the real estate portion. And at that time, working with Gary Portner, of course, we're not real estate people, and felt that we needed some support there. But there are quite a few public four-year colleges that are interested in being a part of ATEP, as soon as they figure out how.
Right. Thank you, sir. All right. Now trustee Padberg, sorry about that.
Well, I can see the value in this, and I appreciate that you are looking out for our interest, as well as your own, of course. However, I think with any contract, we need to have our council review it and come up with a recommendation. So that was my one point. But I, it sounds a lot more viable than what we've had presented in the past with one big, major, you know, developer. So I appreciate that, and I'd just like it to go through council before we approve it.
Let's inquire of the vice chancellor, has council looked at this?
Yes, sir. Andy Bernstein's office, Jackson DeMarco, has, has, Andy Bernstein, our counsel that we use for the ATEP development, from Jackson DeMarco, that we talk, he has already reviewed this. Yes.
Trustee Fuentes.
I turn to the address of the CB Richard Ellis firm. I'm curious as to what the process was that we came up with this particular firm. This is the South Orange County Community College District, and I like to see us use firms in the South Orange County community, and contribute to the economy of our district. And this is a, an Anaheim-based firm. I suspect their brokers and staff are North County-based. Can you tell us how the selection was made? It doesn't, it's not a bid situation, as I take it. How did, how did we come up with this particular firm, and did we look adequately at South County firms?
Certainly. I remember Fuentes, actually, this More member Fuentes, actually, this, although the address you see there is for Anaheim, this is actually a joint project between the Anaheim office and the Newport Beach office. Newport Beach office acts as a South County office for CB Richard Ellis. So what our attempts were to make sure that we had complete county coverage of a site that is as important as the ATEP site is, being centrally located almost exactly in the middle of the county, we wanted to make sure that we had both halves of the county covered in terms of manpower. So Dave Desper, one of the folks who's going to be working on this, is from the Newport Beach office, and his area of expertise is from the spectrum south. The other fellow that's be working on this, Rick Warner, is in Central County, and his responsibilities are Central County and North County. As to how we got here, we made a recommendation of three national firms, Gruben Ellis, Cushman and Wakefield, and CB Richard Ellis as potential bidders on this project, not bidders, but proposers on this project. All three of those were interviewed by the district staff, along with Hudson Capital and Jackson DeMarco attorneys. And we asked for proposals from each of them and recommended that CB Richard Ellis be selected for a number of reasons. One, their pricing was competitive. Two, their reputation is impeccable in the commercial world. And three, that we knew that they were providing the coverage that we were looking for, both on a county level, on a state level, and also on an international level.
To add to that, they also proved to us that they had extensive experience representing educational institutions as well.
Trustee Padberg.
I move the item.
All right. Is there a second?
Second, right.
Moved in second, and no further requests to speak. Let's go ahead and vote on the item. Matter carries with one no vote. Item 6.7, and a number of board policies here for review and study. I'll entertain a motion to accept for review and study.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Please stand your...
And, Mr. Padberg. Matter carries unanimously. Item 6.8 is a public hearing. As such, I will adjourn the meeting of the board, open a public hearing with respect to the district's initial proposal to the Police Officers Association, inquire of the secretary, Madam Secretary, and request to speak. All right. Hearing none. The public hearing is closed. Item 6.8 is done, and we move to item 6.9. Academic personnel action items here for approval.
Move approval.
Moved and seconded, no changes to the item. Discussion. Let's vote. Matter carries unanimously. Item 6.10, classified personnel action items.
Move approval.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded, and seeing no changes or requests to speak, we vote. Trustee Fuentes, please. Matter carries unanimously. Item 7.1, the list of Saddleback College speakers.
Move approval.
Information item. All right. No questions or comments. Item 7.2, the basic report.
Yeah.
All right. 7.3, another information item, the facilities plan status report. 7.4, the board requests, reports. 7.5, the quarterly financial status report. Everybody's good with that. 7.6, the quarterly investment report. All right. And 7.7 has been pulled to be reworked and brought back to us with additional information in a cleaner, more user-friendly format. So we will get that, I understand, next month, correct? All right. Very good.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I realize the item has been pulled to be brought back, and that's just fine. I, in consultation with chancellor, am informed that if we might, if the board might ask her to bring back to us a guideline of policy for the presentation of this kind of information, it would all be a little smoother, and I would like to accommodate that by requesting that.
I am glad you asked that. I think we did have an opportunity to chat, and I think we're going to put together a policy as to how we present this to the public in the best and most effective manner, correct?
We will bring that back to the board, yes.
With the policy. Excellent. All right. Item eight. Oh, anything further? I'm sorry. All right. Item eight, and we will start with the report of President Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, it's one weekend in the new academic year, new semester, and I can honestly say that it's been the most smooth semester beginning that I've seen since I've been here for over two years. So that's a testament to our wonderful staff. In particular, IT did a really good job this year, our parking, our faculty and everybody else. So things are going great. I think one of the trustees had mentioned earlier about where we are at enrollment. No surprise, we're up. We've been trying to keep with your directive to keep us at the statewide growth, which is 2.2%, and we're going to exceed that, but hopefully by a little bit. But more importantly than that growth, of course, is that we have less sections and actually less adjunct faculty. So our efficiency level, i.e. our expenses to serve more students, is not there. So we're, once again, a testament to our wonderful faculty and deans for their scheduling and getting our classes actually fill rate, which is really high. So it's going really well. As you know, I think one of the, trustee Milchiker mentioned flex week. I just put that on your chair here, the new faculty that we hired at Saddleback College that you might like to see the wonderful, one of the benefits of this, one of the very few benefits of this economy and situations, that we get wonderful pools of candidates, and we just have phenomenal faculty that are joining us here at Saddleback College. We're very thrilled. Another thing that happens on an annual basis, as you know, I produce the annual state-of-the-college address, which we do at the president's breakfast and lunch the first time. We will be having an official annual state-of-the-college community event in early October, which you'll hear more about. Next, of course, the biggest achievement that's happened, and you just received, hopefully you got it, your own official hard copy of our accreditation report, which we're very proud to have given to each of you. In addition to that, I just put on your chair a wonderful flash drive. Isn't that nice? Little saddleback flash drive? So you get it both ways. You can also go online and our wonderful accreditation website to get it. So everybody can get that. In addition, we have a wonderful handout here for those of you that want the Cliff Notes version. We give it out to every employee. I would like to thank our academic senate, who is responsible, and Professor Clara Cesaro Silva in particular, that put together this wonderful brochure that we give out to every single employee and anybody else to get ready for our visiting team. Finally, I just would like to announce, our first kickoff football home game is on September 11th at 6:00 PM versus Bakersfield, and would invite everybody to come on out. With that said, I will pass it over to my wonderful colleague.
Thank you very much. I would like to mention that our accreditation report is out. I think you all must have that, the self-study. I think it's wonderfully done, and that was actually proven to us because we've had our pre-visit, and that's where the chair and the team assistant comes out and works logistics with us and gives us a little bit of a preview of what they have found in the report. And it was nothing but compliments in that. And that was attended by our ALO, our self-study chair, academic senate president, classified senate president, and also our researcher, and all of which were requested by the visiting team chair to meet with. It all went just absolutely beautifully. So I hope that's a prelude to what's going to be coming along. Our opening day was also highly successful. The enrollments, I think, we're trying to figure out exactly what this means, but we're showing right now about 14,900. And yet, to a person, the campus is felt at least a third more crowded than it did last year. So we can't understand why the number isn't higher. So it's indicating being down about .68 from our compare last fall. But we're certain, and, you know, I'm pretty sure it will, we're going to reach 16,000 by the time we get to the end of the year with our second eight weeks and all the other enrollments that are yet to come. But even with that, our FTES actually is up by 4.74%. And so how do you do that with fewer students? Well, those students are taking more courses, that they're more full-time students, which is really better for us overall. And also, our productivity is up almost 3%. And so that's an indication of really how full we are. I would like to thank our students for, although they've all gone now, but really for a well-prepared budget and also a well-presented budget. It really makes us proud to see that happen. It was a job well done. And then finally, before we meet next, we're going to have our 9/11 commemoration on 9/10 because it's Friday. I hope you can all make it. It'll be at 12:30. We have Irvine Police Chief Dave Maggard. We have also the Orange County Fire Authority Chief Keith Richter. And a special guest, we have Jeff Gilbert from Morgan Stanley. And you may remember that that company was particularly impacted in one of the towers, and he has quite an interesting story to tell. So I hope you can all come out and be a part of that ceremony. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, ATEP also is enjoying a very smooth opening and startup for the fall term. Our eight classrooms, labs, and studios there are very busy and scheduled fully. So that's impressive, and we thank the two colleges for the scheduling of those courses to accomplish that. Also wanted to indicate to the public tonight, and also again to the board, that of course the City of Tustin has approved our concept 3A plan for the expansion of ATEP up to 305,000 square feet for our next build-out for classrooms, labs, and educational space. And since that initial approval earlier in the month, the appeal period has now expired. So actually, we have now an uncontested approval for the district to move ahead. So that's certainly exciting for the district and ATEP. I, along with some ATEP staff, Terry Flugeman, and also people from Hudson Capital, visited this last month. College of the Canyons, we actually saw the university center operation there, which is significant, one of the stars in the state. President Rockmore's been there and talked to, also President Diane Van Hook. She, along with two of her vice presidents and a director, met with us and spent several hours doing a tour and opened up their books, and we were able to see basically how they contracted with and did agreements with universities, how they moved through articulation agreements, how they coordinated a lot of their efforts to make sure it was a win-win deal with the, with College of Canyons and also with universities so students could transition from the college programs into university programs. So that's information we'll take forward, and I think will be very helpful as we continue to develop and expand the ATEP model. Last point, we were just provided an announcement, and it'll be something more official in our next board, that the National Center for Optics and Photonics, we call it OPTEC, was provided another federal fund from the National Science Foundation, and we have the only OPTEC center in the western U.S. And we will be receiving, besides significant support and materials and curriculum development and such, an additional $30,000 per year to support that operation. Thank you.
Professor Davis Allen.
Just a brief report tonight. There is a full complement of faculty that are back in the classroom at IVC, helping to address many of the unique issues inside the classroom as we come up to this economy in the fall of 2010. The Blackboard 9 launch, which was a quite large upgrade, is essentially complete on our campus, and faculty are working with tech, pretty much have it under control, manageable certainly, and underway in our both online classes as well as our hybrids. We don't, as an academic senate, convene and seat our senators this fall until the 9th of September. So I'll probably have more specifics to report on at the next meeting. But I will say that faculty are already in preparation for the October accreditation site visit and are going to be hosting a faculty open house for the visiting team. We'll continue to work on curriculum. This is a big year for our annual, for our development of our annual program review. So we'll be very involved with that. And specifically, we already, and I brought some handouts for you that I'll share before you leave, the senate-sponsored IVC to IVC faculty speaker series already has eight confirmed, and since the printing of this, we now have a ninth. One of our professors, Professor Terry Chat Cook, has completed a grant-driven independent film, and we'll be doing the initial screening of that film on our campus, hopefully March 28th is the tentative date. We also have a call for our distinguished academic lecture series nominations. We hope to have at least one, maybe two, but certainly at least one in this academic year. And that's it for this evening.
Professor Davingas.
Just a few things. We are, had a lovely opening, and Professor Louis Long is handing out something. One of our first goals that we passed was that we wanted to ensure that our college had a wonderful site visit and that every member of our community knew the Saddleback College vision, mission, and values. And so I am passing this out. This was produced by the academic senate in support of our accreditation activities. If you could please take one and pass one down. We'd all like you card-carrying members of the Saddleback College vision, mission, and values. And this is so that everyone can put there in the wallet, put there in their iPhone package, and so that if we get stopped, they can say, "Do you have it?" And absolutely. So we want to have a wonderful visit. And we've had a smooth opening. Saddleback Senate's been very busy, and we have our new, we've done our new faculty orientation. We start our curriculum review. We start tech review next week. We've seated quite a few members on committees, and we're heading into our second full meeting of the semester on Wednesday. And that's all. Thank you.
Professor Long.
Faculty Association has no report this evening.
Mr. Hamilton.
Classified Senate Saddleback has no report tonight.
Ms. Morehouse.
CSCA is carrying up for our 2011 negotiations, and we're looking forward to sitting at the table with Dr. Bouguet. And with the hustle and bustle and no parking on campuses, we're looking forward to a terrific semester. Thank you.
Mr. Gordon.
Thank you. Well, we had our first meeting in the year. We kicked off with President Rockmore giving us a little pep talk. Also had that meeting with Vice President Frank Plano and Vice President Craig Justice were also there. We reviewed our goals for this coming year, 2011. We also went over the duties and responsibility of all of our committee and chair members and our senators. And last but not least, we did a review of the overview that we presented to the Four Seas Conference up in Lake Tahoe last month for classified staff employees.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we stand adjourned in memory of Professor Leslie Cromwell.
Thank you so much.
I'm going to study actuarial study.